Good, all right. Good evening all, welcome to the Board of Education Regular Business Meeting of August 28th. Can I please have a motion to open the meeting? Christine first, Michelle second, all in favor? That is everyone. It is upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss specific legal, collective bargaining, personnel, and other matters in accordance with the Open Meetings Law. Can I please have a motion? Christine, Tom, and all in favor? That's everyone, we will reconvene at seven. Thank you. All right, great, welcome back to our board meeting of August 28th, 2023. Can I have a motion to reopen the regular business meeting? Michelle and Christine, second, all in favor? And Ms. Sullivan couldn't make it today, she is away. This is going to be a bit of a bittersweet meeting, but we're gonna get through, all right? Let's all get up for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder that we have exits, emergency exits in the back that are lit in red and on the sides as well. This is a smoke-free campus and smoking is not permitted near the campus. Brings us to the approvals. We have the Board of Education meeting minutes of August 7th, 2023. Can I have a motion for approvals? Bill and Christine, second, all in favor? That is everyone. We have an FYI for budget transfers. There were two, I believe, one is to reestablish budget for remaining prior SEPTA's grant funds and the other one is to replenish Southtown Supply Code for additional small supply purchases. That brings us to the warrants. You can have a motion for the warrants, please. That's Tom and Christine, all in favor? That is everyone. We have a special meeting today, today is the last board meeting for our Superintendent, Mr. Polanski, and we've, I should say Christine and Michelle have done a lot to prepare for it. So I'm gonna hand over the mic to Christine, I believe she's gonna get us started today.
I can go first. You wanna do it first?
Yeah.
Okay. So just introduce them or say what I'm gonna say?
Introduce them.
Okay, so we have made arrangements for Emily Castara and Mike Zygon to perform some lovely music for us while we all watch a presentation on the screen. So I think if the board would move that way, or everybody at the table would move that way, so that we can watch and enjoy. So let's give a hand for our talented musicians.
That's really nice. Just mark, good, hold yourself. Sure, sure, we'll take a three-minute break. All right? Okay, all right, so we're back on. At this point, I'd like to open it up to our board members and make some remarks. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first, I gotta get it out of the way. I had the privilege at the council lunch to speak about Jim, so I'm gonna keep it brief. We've been working together a really long time, first as a crazy allergy parent. I'm sure you remember our first interaction, how dare you not have nut-free schools? And then as a PTA leader, I know, I shouldn't have said that. As a PTA leader and then I had the privilege to sit at this table for four years with you. It's been a privilege to work with you, I call you a friend now, and now that you are moving into retirement, I have a lot of free time some days, so we will hit the golf course, we will, whatever, we'll get together. I know that it's not goodbye for us, we'll see a lot of each other. And I just wanna thank you for your years of service to this community. You have truly made a mark on so many children, including my own, and I feel very lucky personally for you to have been so involved in my children's education here. And I just wanna thank you for all your years of service.
Well, this is gonna get redundant pretty quickly. So I'm just gonna say, again, appreciate everything. You, I think, were one of the, your first contract was one of the last documents I ever signed, so I have that honor as the board president. And no, it's just, you know, it's been a great run, you've done a ton of great things. You look at all the things that, where you came, what you came into and what you're leaving behind, feel great.
I guess I'm the youngest tenured one here in the, on the board, but
Tallest.
But the tallest, yeah, that's true. I just, I feel like I've known Jim since my children have been here, he's been their superintendent, and you know, we were alums from the same university, we're both fellow educators. And you know, all these years, I always just felt he was looking out for the best for my children and for the children of Huntington, and I'm just very grateful to know that, being on this particular side, that everything I thought about you is true. I'm very appreciative for what you've done for my children, children of this community and for Huntington. So, thank you, Jim.
I think I'm going last, because I have the gift.
I'll go last, you can go, yeah.
Okay, so Jim, from, I think from the first day that I sat in your office as the SEPTA president, I knew that we were gonna be in good hands, I had no doubts. You always spoke, whatever your opinion was, with, like, an authority that always informed me that you knew why you were saying what you were saying, not just that you had an opinion and you were telling me what it was. And I always appreciated that, you always shared all of your reasons for all of your decisions along the way and taught me so much about how to be a board member, how to be a leader. And I just wanna thank you for that professionally, personally. From the moments we've shared of, you know, you watching Joey run down the halls of Southtown and tomorrow he will turn eighteen, to us attending so many events together, concerts, games, assemblies, all the things, watching all the kids of this district grow up together for these last decade-plus. It's been a privilege to share it with you, and as I said at your party, I'm ready to be just friends. So thank you.
Me too.
Okay, I'll go next. So before I knew much about Huntington, I knew about you. I knew about Mr. Polanski, and as an incoming kindergarten mom, Jen Hubert sort of gave me the lay of the land when we were at St. John's, and I was like, what's this district all about? She told me what you are all about, and that began my journey into the Huntington School District. And everything she said and then some were true, and you've blown away, I think, all of our wildest expectations. You embody what it means to be a good leader, a good steward, not just for our school, but for our community at large. You've put so many parents at ease, myself included. You've taught me how to be a better parent in a community, in a district, where I may not always agree with, you know, other parents or teachers or administration, which doesn't happen often, thankfully, but we're very lucky, and I think that is because of the leadership that you give to our district and our children. So now as I have that kindergartener who's now embarking on her high school journey, it's hard for me to imagine a Huntington without Mr. Polanski. And I know that I take solace, as I'm sure the rest of us do as well, in seeing how much you've tirelessly worked over the past twelve years, devoting your days and evenings to this district, to our kids most importantly, to leave it in a better place than you found it. So I thank you for that, and I wish you all of the best in your next chapter, giving it back to your family. Thank you for letting us have him for all of these years, and obviously, good health and lots of relaxation. And you can take solace knowing that, while your reputation may have preceded you, your indelible legacy will certainly outlast you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
I echo these sentiments of my board members, it's been a privilege and an honor to serve with you. I was looking at some of these pictures here, and I see that when you first started, you started, I remember, green as a superintendent, and over time, you've gotten a little gray, but you're gonna leave a Blue Devil, because I know that that's how you feel and that's who you are. And I remember the very first day I met you, I felt that dedication, that compassion. You had a spark about you, and you knew what you wanted to do for us, and you've never stopped. The first day we met after a meet the candidates, you said to me, we're gonna open up that school again, referring to this school as a STEM school. And your enthusiasm hasn't stopped. I saw you yesterday at a band practice, and you're still enthusiastic about this district. And that's something that is just absolutely commendable. As a parent, as a board member, I wanna thank you. I know that this was your job, this was your career, but that's not what you meant to us. You meant a lot more to us than that. I wish you the best in retirement, I hope that your retirement is as successful as your career was, because if it is, you're gonna have a great retirement. Thank you very much.
So we just have a little gift. That was everybody, right?
Yep.
Where did it go? Oh, I put it up here. It's falling apart. We have a little gift that we wanted to give to you and to your lovely wife, because we owe your family so much for, as others have said, giving you to us for all of these years and, you know, probably more than our share, we probably took more than our share of Jim Polanski hours. I know we definitely did. So this is just something, and cards from, I don't know if everyone has cards, but these are cards individually. A little Mickey, a little Mickey.
Thank you, my card. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You know what, I gotta give you a hand. There's few of us here today, but I can speak for the entire district that we all stand and applaud for you and what you've done. Thank you. I'm gonna hand it over to you, Superintendent's communication.
I'm a shell of what I was before I walked in here about twenty minutes ago, twenty-five minutes ago. I'm gonna keep this brief, I left a lot on the table at, you know where. 2011, my phone rang, I was an assistant superintendent in neighboring district, my phone rang. Somebody had asked me if I was interested in taking a look at Huntington and the superintendencies, and I said no. Took me a couple of minutes, but I convinced him that I meant no. It happened again, it happened a third time, it happened a fourth time, and I agreed to come up for a conversation. I met with the then-board. Bill was actually president back then. Rich McGrath was the phone caller, actually, Emily Rogan, Kim Brown, Liz Black, Adam Spector, Chris Benet, did I miss anybody? I got them all, is that seven? Yeah, okay, and Jen Hubert and Adam Spector took over very quickly there, Liz Black. Liz Black, they did say Liz, okay. That conversation started a whole new chapter in my career. I don't know what the educational powers would have had in store for me had I not taken that meeting, or I had not come up here. I will tell you, it was the best decision I ever made. This has been more than a job for me, this has been a passion, this is a community that will remain a part of me indefinitely, and it's not about, we've made academic improvements, we've added programs, we've reopened a school, we've put together a phenomenal pre-kindergarten program. We've, I hope that part of my legacy, those in the audience tonight and those watching, understand that it's not just about the things that we've added, but I've always tried to present whatever it is that we're doing in a manner that shows that the money spent, it's not my money, it's not our money, it's taxpayer money. So we've tried to do things in the most fiscally responsible manner during a very difficult financial time. Whatever it's been, I've tried to give it every ounce of the passion that I think I've had for this district since the day I walked in. I can't thank the kids that I've met through the years enough, it's such a pleasure to watch. And Emily Castara sitting at the piano, I remember her as a little kid, she didn't speak. She was a shy little Flowerhill kindergartner, first grader. Just watching these kids grow up and turn into the young adults that are going to make a difference in this world that has been, and I tell new superintendents, which is starting out all the time, through the association roles that I've played last year, the privilege of serving as the president of the Suffolk Superintendents Association, they're rewarding a lot of new superintendents. I'm pleased to have Mr. Bowen here, knowing that he's dedicated to making a similar impact over time, but just impressing upon anybody who's just getting into this the importance of establishing yourself in a district and not just running to the next opportunity that may be, it may look good on the outside, but once you establish yourself in a place and it becomes your own, there's nothing better than that. It's been a true joy, I will miss it tremendously. I am at peace with the decision, but I'm gonna wake up on September 2nd and I'm gonna be completely disconnected electronically, and that is going to be a whole new world for me. When I ask what I'm most proud of, there's one thing that stands out. It's certainly the kids and families and the relationships that we've built through the years. It's also the team that we've put together, the Team Huntington, there is no better. Your kids are in great hands because of the folks that are here to serve them and to love them and to take care of them from the second they walk in the doors to the second they leave and well beyond. This is a very special place, and people who don't live in Huntington sometimes don't see that. It's foolish not to see that, because if you actually took a close look, there's no place better to raise a family, there's no place better to go to school than, and listen, every day is not perfect. And I know, I'm an opinionated person, but I've tried to do what I do with information in hand and to do the best that I possibly can for all families, for us as a collective district, but also for each individual child and family to do what's best for them. It doesn't always work, because there are constraints, but I hope I've left those that may not have agreed with the decision I've made with the impression that I did my homework and I did the best I could under the circumstances and did the best I could to make this community proud. So, thank you all, I will miss you all terribly. I will be following the district from wherever I am, because as Mr. Polanski has pointed out, I am a Blue Devil for life, this place will be a part of me forever. Thank you all.
Now to your superintendent communications and announcements.
I think I'm gonna leave it at that tonight.
Okay, very good. All right, we'll open it now to public commentary, board members will have another opportunity to go over our comments at the end. Public commentary is open for three non-transferable minutes per person, maximum of thirty minutes total. We will start with comments related to today's regular business meeting. Items for discussion and action, please identify your affiliation to the district when you come up and refrain from naming any students or employees of the district. And when all of you run up there, please sign your names. All right, there's a second opportunity later on after this. So now we will move on to items for discussion and action. The Board of Education meeting dates 2023-24. There is a revised version of it so that we can allow our superintendent, our new superintendent, to attend the NISCIS Fall Leadership Summit. I believe that we're making a change so that the new Board of Education meeting reflects it meeting on October 3rd, it's a Tuesday, same time, so can I have a motion, please? Motion by Bill, second by Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Move on to the second item. That one is professional development plan. Can I have a motion, please? That's Tom, second by Christine.
This is an annual approval. Typically, the update relates to any information that we have regarding the outcomes from state assessments, which will not be available until we hit the, probably the month of October, later in October. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. McCoy to highlight any additional differences.
Sure, there are no major material changes this year. We've updated the plan based on district software, which is based on usage annually, so we update the different softwares that are listed. The professional development, which is based on survey data from teachers and administrators. The programs such as iReady, which has expanded, is included in the plan as well. The fall and spring professional development calendars, so they are annually updated and revised based on need, based on surveys, and based on information that's gathered throughout the school year. But there's no major material changes for this year.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Motion passes. That brings us to curriculum and instruction.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve CSE, CPSE submissions as delineated.
Can I have a motion, please? That's Christine, second by Michelle, any questions? All in favor? Motion passes. That brings us to personnel.
It is upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve Personnel Items on Schedules 3, 5, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, and 22.
Can I have a motion? Michelle, second by Tom. All in favor? That's everyone, motion passes. Mr. Polanski?
Okay, quite a few announcements tonight, we'll start with our newest staff members. So I'd like to welcome, and I don't know who's here, and rule of thumb, I can only see Mr. Landers, past him. All bets are off. So, beginning with us in Huntington, and I will open by stating I have no regrets, but one of the things I wish I could do is work with these folks that we've brought on board and that we're bringing on board tonight for a period of time, because I know that this is a special group that's going to add to that team that I just mentioned before. So I'd like to welcome first, and this is in alphabetical order by schedule, starting with us at Jefferson in the area of elementary education, Stephanie Guanemi. Stephanie here? Okay, we're excited to have her here. She's going to be a tremendous asset to the Jefferson faculty. Joining us in the music department is a Blue Devil, Miss Ariel Harvey. Give a wave, Ariel. She is going to be a tremendous addition to the orchestra program in the district, so we're thrilled to have her here, and we always love to bring the Blue Devils back to Huntington. All right, also joining us, and some of these are in leave replacement capacity, but they will be with us for at least some time, in the mathematics department at the high school, Stephanie Bagley. Finley Middle School Science Department, Brian D'Angelo. In the ENL Department at Jefferson, Amanda Guerra. And the math department at the high school, Chad Marinelli. And joining us, actually, at the high school in established teacher, she'll be joining us in leave replacement capacity as we search for an assistant principal, Tricia Velli. Okay, it's lightening that respect tonight. Okay, there's another group here on Schedule Nine that I'd like to acknowledge, and again, I express a little bit of a regret here, because one of the things I really enjoy doing, and the board knows this, is pulling our group of tenure candidates together in the fall when people return, which is still certainly a possibility. I enjoy throwing accolades at them and welcoming them to the tenured Huntington family. Unfortunately, obviously, this is my last meeting, but I would like to recognize them, and I'm gonna ask whomever is here, and again, I can't see past Mr. Landers, and he's already established here. I'm gonna ask you to come up so I can share a little token of my appreciation and we can get a picture together. So, in the science department, Michael Corcoran at the high school. Once everybody's up here, we can give them a round of applause. So, in the science department, Michael Corcoran at the high school. Business teacher Greg Dietrich. Guidance counselor Evelyn Hernandez. Physical education teacher, I actually can see him. He's got a unique feature that stands out, Jordan Iaviero. I was talking about his tie. At the elementary level, Elaine Leon. A special shout-out to this next person who claimed that I actually did have some innate artistic talent and helped me paint The Rock, Miss Jenna Murgett in the art department. And she should also know that I have the gratitude plate all wrapped in tissue paper. It's coming with me. In the science department, Melissa Sorrentino. The math department, and although he's labeled as a math teacher, he's been instrumental in moving our computer science program forward, Mr. Nick Wagner. And last but not least, she happens to be a W, Miss Devon Went, Spanish department.
That brings us to the business agenda. Dr. Ruby Harris, please.
It is upon the recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves items I through O on this evening's business agenda.
Can I have a motion? That is Christine and Tom. All in favor? That's everyone. Motion passes. I think we have various new appointments. Mr. Bowen, it looks like you've been appointed to do everything. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Want to mention, there was a settlement on there with Shaha.
Yes, there was.
Okay. We're proud to announce that we have, the district has reached an agreement with the Study Hall and Hallway Assistance Unit. That is actually moving forward. Their current agreement expired at the end of June, and moving forward, there is a new agreement in place. So we are pleased to have that as we start the new school year. Thank you to everybody involved.
That brings us to our second public commentary. Same rules apply. I don't think we're gonna get in a cage. All right. And then we will bring it back to our board members for any comments, discussion.
I would just like to thank our buildings and grounds folks for all the work over the summer that they've done. If you drive around, you can see some of the exterior work, but there's also been interior work. So thank you for all of your hard work. I'd like to wish our staff, our teachers, our administrators, our students, a great start to the new year. And welcome, Mr. Bowen.
I just want to make a quick announcement for the Huntington Boosters, which is an athletic support program, as well as for the arts, that they're planning for this coming November 11th on Veterans Day, their annual benefit dinner. But there's gonna be a benefit dinner and concert that's gonna be held at our iconic Paramount Theater. The number of bands that will be playing, and headlined by Huntington's own bogmen. And if you're interested in any tickets, check out the Boosters, Huntington Booster Club to support the program. With, Booster Club has raised over a million dollars for the children of Huntington. And we really appreciate your support once again. So looking forward to that wonderful night.
Thank you. Sounds like it's gonna be a fun night. Tickets are pretty hot, difficult to get.
Very mu, very difficult. I would go right now to the website, get your tickets.
Anyone else? Mr. Plansky?
Just a quick note for me to wish everybody well as the new school year begins. This is going to be the first in 34 years that I will not be involved directly on opening day. I will be thinking about you all. I'd like to give a shout-out to the staff across the Huntington School District, to my administrative team, and specifically to my cabinet members through the years. I'd like to thank Ms. McCoy and Mr. Hendrick for being my right and left hands for many years now. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I'd like to thank Dr. Harris for jumping on board here. She's made tremendous progress in a short time and is gonna be a tremendous asset to the business office here. And if Dr. Acker is watching, miss you, Kathy. And I can't tell you how much I enjoyed working together with you for decades. And I'd like to welcome and wish well to Mr. Christian Bowen, who will be taking over superintendent, and I have no doubt that he's gonna do a fantastic job. So welcome aboard. You get a great place to do the work. Thank you all again.
This is the time that I call for an adjournment, you know? And it reminds you of that moment where the Yankees pulled somebody off the mound, right? Remember that? Mariano gets pulled off the mound. So I'm not gonna call for the adjournment. I'm gonna ask you to call for the adjournment.
Is Derek Jeter and...
Jorge Posada out there. They're on their way.
Because I can't see past Mr. Landers. No, that's Jim Hoops back there, sorry.
It's your adjournment to call.
Motion to adjourn. One final time? We'll go with Bill. Chris second?
All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Jim.